Anyone to stand for the pledge of the flag, please. Welcome, everybody, to the April 18th. Commissioner Gibbons is out this evening and we are going to excuse him.
Back is paid.
Do we have an approval of the minutes of April 4th?
Second.
A motion and second and a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our National Report handed the bills. Do we have a motion?
So.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I do have a little bit of discussion. I just want to read into the minutes, the cash balances if I could. The general fund as of March 31st, 2018, had $2,224,833.72. The water fund, $3,110,79.43. The sewer fund, $8,435,31.65. Major facility fund, $4,147,249.65. For a total of $17,917,194.45. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Lou, you're on.
The first item I have is ordinance 4-2018. This is an amendment to Chapter 2.28 of the Police Pension Plans Act. During the course of examination of certain sections of this Act, the FOK participants, they pointed out that there was an error. And this ordinance is to correct that error. And there's a reference in one section to another section that doesn't exist. So the actual section should be, I don't know if you have to email it on you or not, but there's a section 2.28090 that should be C and not a D, that's all it was.
Okay.
And because of that, making that correction will correct Police Pension Panel respect for that reference.
We have a motion to approve ordinance 4-2018. Please pension. Plan presented for introduction.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 4-2018.
For introduction. Do we have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next I have is ordinance 5, 2018, Water Systems Service. Ends Chapter 13.04, Section 1304050. Link with water enters deleting $25 restoration fee, which is codified in the ordinance. And we're changing it to, by way of amendment, I mean, we're going to amend it, to include that the fee is set by a resolution of the board rather than be codified as a set amount. So I would recommend that the board adopt ordinance 5, 2018, allow for the fee to be set by ordinance rather than be codified in the code.
We have a motion for ordinance 5-2018. Water Service System, presented for introduction.
I'll send them.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Lou, is there any discussion? We're going to change the rate by resolution. Does in-house, do we believe it's going to go like from $25 to $100?
$1,000, I think, to discourage.
You had me going here.
I don't know. It's up to the Finance Department will make a recommendation. We don't have it at this point in time.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
A Resolution 5-2018, this is a resolution opposed to an ordinance. In the code, there's actually a set of procedures under Chapter 2.04 Board of Commissioners that has order of proceedings. In those orders, under Chapter, I think you have a lot of copy there, under Paragraph B, Review and Approval Financial Reports, Authorization to Pay Bills, Members to the Budget, Other Financial Matters. We want to change that to allow the Finance Office to pay some bills prior to authorization by the board. The reason we're doing this is because we've had a number of bills, especially utility bills, that fall short before the board approves them and we're getting hit with penalties, late fee penalties. Sometimes it's a short turnaround. If you have a bill that allows your full 30 days or 25 days or something, that's not a big problem. But in Elmarva's case, and I think sometimes in Elton gas, their turnaround is pretty short and we've been hit with a number of times with the penalty, late fee penalty. So we want to be able to pay those when they're received. And then the vendor's list, all the bills will be submitted to the board anyway to see it. I don't think the board examines each one of those bills anyway, but we need to ensure that we can do that rather than get hit with penalties all the time. So this procedure will allow that the Finance Department, which is authorized by the Charter, to disperse any monies to pay the bills as long as it's within the confines of the approved budget. So it's not inconsistent with the town's charter.
We have a motion to approve Resolution R 5-2018.
So.
A motion and a second. No. I just wanted to mention to you, I do review every bill. And I think most of the board members, I think we all do well selling. And I wanted to make another comment. It will allow us also now to take discounts, if there's any discounts available on the bills.
That would allow us, that's correct. And even if you don't pay the penalty, which it are something, it's very time consuming to call the vendor and ask for some forgiveness. And a lot of times it's random, so when the timing of the meetings fall like this a few weeks off, it's sometimes very difficult to, because the bills out.
And payable.
And then when it comes out with payable, we get a double, such as this year.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The last item I have is the proclamation 7-2018, Relay for Life Day. Proclamation of the Mayor and Commissioners of the Town of Elton, declaring May 19, 2018, as Relay for Life Day in the Town of Elton. Whereas for 22 years, the citizens of Cecil County have come together through Relay for Life activities to celebrate cancer survivors and caregivers, and to remember loved ones lost to that disease. And whereas Relay for Life empowers individuals and communities to fight back against cancer. And whereas money raised during Relay for Life in the Town of Elton supports American Cancer Society's mission of saving lives and creating a world less cancer and more birthdays by helping people to get well and stay well, and by finding cures for cancer. And whereas in 2017, National Relay for Life activities funded more than $150 million in cancer research. Now therefore, be of results that the Mayor and Commissioners of the Town of Elton nearby proclaim May 19, 2018, Relay for Life Day. And the Town of Elton encourages all citizens to participate in Cecil County's 22nd Annual Relay for Life Event at 3:00 PM on May 19th at the Elton High School.
We have a motion to approve proclamation P 7-2018, Relay for Life Day.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That's the items I have.
There's an easement agreement?
Going to hold off on that.
Okay, very good. Very good. Couple things on my report tonight. I actually missed the last workshop and I really appreciate the board stepping up and reviewing the budgets. Thank you. I attended the Elton Alliance luncheon, my last luncheon, and a Patriots' plan. It was a... Of course, I was the fortunate one. I guess I'm the fortunate one. No one's seeking the position of mayor this year other than myself, so I didn't really have to say too much. But I did give a presentation and I certainly thank Eugene and Mary Jo. And I want to thank Cody Kirk for also being there, the three applying for the position. I thought it was a very good day. Friday, this past Friday night, I attended the Chef's Challenge at the Sagerly Fire Hall. It was a benefit for Union Hospital. And I have to say, if anyone has, and Eugene was there. If anyone ever has an opportunity to attend that Chef's Challenge, that's one of the finest evenings that I can say. It's a lot of fun and the food is fantastic. And the problem is, is you get too much food. But you're tasting, in this past, the winner was Steak in Maine from Northeast. They did a wonderful job of getting the votes for the best chef. It was very good, very good.
When did you have time here?
I did have time. Of course, I was the MC. Let's see. And tomorrow evening, I just wanted to remind the board that we have a Maryland Municipal League Cecil Harper Chapter Dinner at the Northeast Bagwood Hall. If anyone wants to ride down with me, there's certainly...
Right.
What did I say?
More east.
Oh, did I say more east? Hosted at Rising Sun Bagwood Hall. And if anyone would like to ride down with me, I'll be happy to drive. Also, I wanted to bring it to everyone's attention and our residents' attention that the Public Service Commission has scheduled a public hearing May 1st here in Elton. It's actually going to be here at Town Hall. There is a proposed acquisition of Elton Gas by South Jersey Industries. Most people could be aware of this, but if you're not, the hearing will be held here, right where you're sitting at. And we appreciate any help. If anyone wants to come and talk and discuss and hear. We're here to listen about the presentation, but they're giving us an opportunity to talk about their acquisition of Elton Gas. We also have a couple of community cleanups. I think you can see out front, Dan, I'm going to read right off your memo. Out front, we're replacing the concrete out here in front of Town Hall. And then we're going to work on the landscaping. This Saturday, we've got the community cleanup. The neighborhoods will include Hollinsworth Manor, two different areas in Hollinsworth Manor, Lancy Village and Turnquist. Sarah Guns is going to be directing the cleanup at the end of Calais, is that correctness there? And in the area where the field is located. And if anyone hasn't been out there, she does a great job. And I think she's even going to be offering lunch to the volunteers.
Anybody that helps gets hot dogs and chips.
Fantastic, fantastic. And just a reminder that on Sunday, April 22nd, is the annual hazardous waste collection day at Cecil County Landfill. So anything that the Town of Elton won't pick up for you, you can take down to the Cecil County Landfill. That's all I have this evening. Ms. Jean?
You don't really leave a lot for residents.
I agree, yeah, shut them off.
It's okay. The only thing I was wondering if we ever have resolved out of Button Woods for the parking was that, for that chief question?
Still working.
Still working either?
Probably a best answer, yeah.
As long as they're working on it, that's what I'm really hoping to hear.
We've worked through that several times. And unfortunately, there's no easy answer there.
You know, I'm glad you brought that up. The one question that, we've gone through it. And we've had so many different scenarios through the workshops. When she was in here speaking at the last meeting, the young lady had stated that there was markings. Did we put the markings? So when we put the markings out, if someone parks into that spot, are they supposed to call the police or how does that work?
There's no ordinance on the books that the police can enforce on a particular spot. There's just no provision in the ordinance for them to do that. So I think they can make a courtesy call or something, but that's the, you know, if your spot's, if somebody's ever been in it, the police have no, they don't have any ordinance to take that enforcement says the wrong person parked in that spot. It's never, it's never been done.
Yeah, it's a longstanding problem. Community was built back in the day when everybody had cars, maybe two cars. Now, they got four cars per unit and four to be parked. And that's family provisions and end of the parking. They did great things as far as making additional spots. But that's, there's just not a good answer.
Yeah, we can stop at three, additional parking areas for that. And I know they use them because I've been out there and seen cars park there. So people do use them. So we added quite a bit of parking there, you know, around the Button Woods.
More parking than they've ever had?
Yes, way more. And I think the other part of the problem is that it transitioned from first time owner living there to first time owner moves away and retains the property and rents it. And now there are four roommates and each has a car. And it just was never parking contemplated. And you can pave over everything, but that's, that's the problem. And Dan has done a great job in pulling together, adding parking, designating parking, and everybody's got parking, at least some parking close to their house. But then what do you do with those people that just don't want?
They don't show any respect for the other spot. I mean, that's what it comes down to. Any other questions down there?
I thought we were going to turn this in, like we have a Turnquist does purpose parking? Yeah, we're.
The issue there could be more complicated because if you designate an issued permit to each person, then you can enforce it, but then it allows two people to be in there. And I don't know what that will do to that whole community. That's the most we could add. And you have visitors, you know, that could be there, they, when the space is open and they'll take and get a ticket.
Stan's deal right now, I mean, something's better than nothing.
Well, and I agree with what John was saying. You have the people that have been there and the new people coming. Because I have friends that children live out there. They've never had a parking problem. And since we added the extra parking there, it's been fine for them. So I think it's who you're talking to, how many vehicles they have. I just, you know, I don't know what more we can do than let's put in the permit parking like Turnquist.
And if I can interject regarding Turnquist, the other difference is if I live at number 50, Button Woods Drive, it's my expectation that I will have a parking space in front of 50 Button Woods Drive. And that came, it's in my D, too. The difference between that and Turnquist is the special purpose parking for Turnquist allows you to park somewhere in that neighborhood. It's not a dedicated space to you. And even if we made it like Turnquist, there'd have to be a different ordinance named for Button Woods because it would be specific to that house, that space.
Can you go, Dan?
I got it. It's not good.
No easy answer.
Ernie, have anything else?
No.
Mary Jo?
Uh, no, I have our vice chair here, so I won't let him talk.
I'll be signed up, I didn't know if it said.
No, I'll just share it. Anything else? Anything?
Oh, actually, I will say, events are starting next week. Car Show is the first of the ever popular car show. Will be April 26th. And House My Hat Band will be playing on the corner. And so it'll be a good time.
Very good. Well, this is the time of the meeting. We open up the floor for anyone who has anything to say. Ms. Sarah Guns, come on down, sign in. Roger, you can watch how this is done and you can.
Okay, I'll learn it. I never read it before you know that.
Okay.
I want to interject something on your Button Woods. My brother's family lives in that neighborhood. And one of the problems that I know is with the new parking that was put in is that Kensington has an HOA, I assume, that prohibits commercial vehicles parked in their driveways or on their street. So if you drive through Button Woods, you're going to see a lot of commercial vehicles because they're driving up from Kensington and picking up the commercial vehicle and going to work in it. Okay? So that may also add to the problem. As well as the two distinct areas in Button Woods that are having the biggest problem are very tight. Like if you go into those blocks, the houses are actually built down past each other. So like you have this road here and then this road goes two houses past it. So like, there's no, there's no parking in front of some of those houses because there's a house literally in front of it.
Yes.
So there's, there's multitudes of issues within that parking area. My brother has a commercial vehicle parked, but he actually lives in Button Woods as well. The PTO at Holly, or Holly Hall Elementary is doing a color run on May 5th. So if anyone's interested in coming out to the color run, the PTO is hosting that.
Where's it going to be at?
It's actually on the school property. And in conjunction with that, they're also having a vendor fair and they're opening the playground to kids of the runners. And so there's a lot going on with the PTO is planning for that color run on May 5th.
Sorry, excuse me, do they have a flyer?
It's on Facebook, I can share it with you.
Okay.
I'm sure there's a flyer because it's in my kid's backpack as well.
Okay.
So yeah, I can share that with you. I just did not bring it with me today, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Girl Scouts Service Unit 2, which is Elton, Chesapeake City, Cecilton, Earlville, is hosting a craft and vendor fair at Elton High School on November 12th, which is Mother's Day weekend from 9 to 1. Do you know, May. It's been a long day. May 12th. If you have any vendors that would be interested, send them my way. Please come out and shop the vendors. We've got some really cute crafts that are going to be there. It supports the Girl Scouts that are in this specific area. Mary Jo did not talk to you about First Friday for May.
Well, that's why Mark's chairs here.
They have some really cool things coming up for First Friday. So everybody should come out for First Friday. And I will leave it for you to tell about. I was excited when I heard.
A lot of people are.
And come out this Saturday. The weather's supposed to be 60 degrees and sunny. And I will feed you at 1:00 if you help me pick up trash in the neighborhood. There's a lot of trash, so there's plenty for everybody.
Very good. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Mrs. Clark, come on down.
Oh, thank you. You know, I was so worried. I didn't see you.
I was hiding from you.
I was so tired of seeing you. You had me worried. Okay. I'm not, I didn't expect to come in, so these are mine. I was hoping our chief would be here. He isn't.
He's in, he's in a conference.
Okay, so I'll address my concern to you and to Lou. And to Mr. George. Can we do something about the speeding traffic on North Street? Please. They just slide. They just slide.
They were out there tonight stopping traffic.
Oh, were they?
When I came in, they would park and go inside yours.
I am so glad. Thank you for telling.
At ours both directions.
Hadn't you liked having we read your line?
There's not much left, so I have left. Okay, I didn't know that. They just buzz up and then.
They had, the police had a car stopped last night when I was going home down by Old Mike's store.
Really?
So they're doing traffic enforcement on that street.
Well, my thing of it is, I have thought this and every time I call the Maryland State Road and this and that and the other and ask them for a larger sign in front of 510 North Street that would be larger, they tell me, but we don't need it. It's up to the Police Department to enforce it. The only signs that I see for traffic is when you come around, whoops, hello there. When you come around right by the middle school, there's one sign up there. And then when you get down just a tiny bit. And I tell you, are there any people here who have kids in the Catholic school? I did at one time. They whip in there in the morning and they come out of there and they don't slow down. They just run. And a fire out there and I read my newspaper. There's one digit, you know, you know, get that digit right up there. So I'll leave it to my chief or my town administrator.
Thank you.
And thank you for reminding me that they are doing it. I've been up there 60 years and I'm telling you, this traffic's terrible. It really is terrible.
It's more and more everywhere.
It's just terrible.
You know how many tickets I rode on that street? The Police Department? Probably a thousand. And there's still way, I bet it's safe, they're disordered.
Okay, well, that's all I have.
Thank you.
And you, Sarah, with your public works. You're doing an outstanding job. I'm all over this town and I don't care where I go. I see them huddering along and doing an outstanding job. I must commend one of the police officers for being very aware of the situation in Elton. Right, Lou?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have ice cream in the car. I have to go. You get the traffic. I knew that was what, 35 years ago, didn't you?
Quite a while.
Oh, he knows.
That's when the horses ran up and down there.
Well, I've been up there.
Can you put a request in with the chief and maybe we can get the the motion, the one that will actually say your speed limit as you're going down across the bridge?
Like they have out there?
Yeah, yeah. You know, it'd be nice to follow up. It'd be nice to follow up this enforcement with, with the
Sign.
Speed, the speed.
Line up.
Did you call me to come back?
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, like Ken Wilcock, Mr. Wilcock, you come down that hill and screech. The cars come to a screeching halt. And I know it's electronic and it seems to me that's expensive to do, but you know, it's just something kind of blinky blinky.
Yep.
They do come down out of there.
It could help.
They put a speed bar there.
The other day I saw our, the other day I saw our town administrator walking over the bridge and I was slightly concerned for him. He was out exercising, but he told me he wasn't.
Now, he was checking the condition of the bridge.
I thought he was out exercising, but he told me he wasn't.
Thank you.
I'm leaving.
All right. Thanks, Mrs. Clark. Mr. Owens, would you like to come down, say a few words to us?
Well, first of all, I want to start by saying that I find the speed limits in the Town of Elton especially. And I did own property in Kensington, of course, and in Button Woods. That's a whole nother story. And Mary Commissioners may enforce be with you. And ladies and gentlemen over there, I'm going to sign in because I guess that's the way I'm supposed to do it, right, Michelle?
Correct.
I'm here representing the Elton Alliance today. I found the right name tags. I have 55 of them on my cabinet. I just didn't know who I wanted to be. And what I'm here for is I want to tell you that the last First Friday we had was just absolutely phenomenal. The Little League parade came and went. It went phenomenally. We had a First Friday. The vendors were open. Everybody hopefully made money. People were happy. The crowds were everywhere. It was great. Upcoming, we have another First Friday coming, and Mary Jo mentioned earlier, the car show. And what we did different, somewhat different on that last First Friday is we had, now the chief's not here, so I won't say the word open carry. That's what I said originally. What I meant was open alcohol. In other words, they can walk a weave or whatever you call this. Not open carry. I saw that, I saw that Mr. Lager there. What I meant was, not open carry. What I meant was that you could visit one establishment and walk to another establishment with a plastic cup with alcohol in your hand. And the idea there was that you would visit the other vendors that were not alcoholic beverage establishment and maybe spend some money, go in there and visit and have a glass of wine with you while you go do it. It went very well. We did not have any problems whatsoever. So what we're asking for from the Elton Alliance is to allow us to do that again on this particular First Friday or Force Friday. Is that how I'm supposed to say it? Force Friday. Force be with you. It's going to be a Star Wars theme and we're expecting a large number of people to come downtown. If, if in any way this turns out not to work properly and the police tell us that it's not going to do well or you, Mr. George, if you're walking around doing your exercise or inspecting the bridge, if it doesn't work out, you tell us, we will do it again. But I think that all of But I think that all the vendors and merchants were very, very happy with that. And that's what I'm here to ask for, is that we have that alcohol waiver, not open carry, excuse my language here, for that particular night. And also, there's other events going on, which I'll elaborate real quick because I could talk forever about nothing. The Memorial Day Parade is coming up on Memorial Day Monday. And we've gotten bigger and bigger and bigger every day. We're not asking for anything there other than the street closure. When have you come out? Because the people that are on the street are not just downtown. We have speakers that I have not experienced yet that'll allow us to broadcast in more areas. But they're over here at the Armory, they're everywhere. So if you have not attended that event, we have at least one band lined up that'll be riding on my truck in a trailer, two, okay? I see a "two" sign over there. That's different than what the other lady had for a sign earlier, apparently. But we, I think that, you know, it's a great time. We're really, really moving forward and doing the best we can for Elton. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, you know, going to the alcohol waiver, I had actually spoke to you a little bit of last night about it and I spoke to another Alliance member the other day about it. And of course, I had reservations about having another alcohol waiver in our town other than a special event. I don't want this to become like a daily practice of people walking through our towns with a glass of beer or a glass of wine. But I think this upcoming First Friday, it does make a little bit of sense if we can put it into a First Friday container. I think we're gonna have a lot of new people into our community.
Correct. This is, for those who don't know, it's Force Friday or whatever we're calling it. It's a Star Wars theme. And we are expecting a lot of visitors from out of town to show up and dressed as Star Wars characters. And we just think it's gonna be, I think, and the Alliance believes that it's gonna bring people into town that have not been there before. And we want to be friendly to them. We want them to go to our shops, we want them to go into our restaurants, we want them to wander around. Say, my gosh, this is a great town, I've never been here before, because I hear that all the time. That's what we're trying to accomplish.
Sir, from my standpoint, we take it one First Friday at a time. And I would be fine with it. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. How do you feel, Jean?
I don't know about it. Is there like a designated cup or is it just...
I think it has to, I think it has to be in some type of First Friday cup. Is that something that could be done?
Absolutely. We can, in the previous time for the Fall Festival, we had a little more expensive cup. We can go and get your standard plastic cup with the First Friday or whatever we want to call it on there. And they're not very expensive. We could produce that and cover that and make it happen, or even get a sponsor for it. I do not believe there's gonna be a problem there. And I have to say that the police force, the chief's not here, but the police have done an excellent job in the past of making sure everything is going well in any event we've had downtown. And especially since Mayor Alt has been here, it's been incredible, the help that we've gotten. Okay, they do really ask. But from the Elton Alliance standpoint, we've had good cooperation with the town, is what I'm saying. I really appreciate it.
Do we need a motion for...
This meeting on the 2nd of May will bring up the waiver and then the board can grant at that point? Because the 4th is when you have the First Friday.
Yes, it's May 4th, that's correct.
That'll cover that.
Very good.
Okay, and we'll go ahead and preorder the cups anyway, just to make sure we assume...
I think you got a consensus here.
Okay, and that's great.
Why do you think people are gonna be dressed, are you accurate?
Yes. Mary Jo, can you elaborate a little more on that? Commissioner?
Why are they gonna be dressed?
Dressed as Star Wars.
How are people gonna come into town?
Because it is May the 4th and they do this all...
May the Force.
And we're saying Force Friday because we...
I just got it, May the 4th.
Disney does not allow you to use "May the 4th be, Force be with you." So we did Force Friday and it's May the 4th. And we set up a booth at Comic Con at Cecil College, it was two weeks ago. And we had fantastic response there. And now all these groups are actually coming out that were there to join us. And if we get this one group, we'll know. We have a meeting on Monday with someone. And I think there's another meeting Friday with someone else. But if we get these groups, it's huge, so...
And we know there's been money downtown.
Yeah.
And I will say, Luke, I am your father. I'm sure I'll say it to some kid or someplace.
Do you have like music or anything?
They were, there is some type of music. The problem is, is we're going away to a wedding. I won't be there that night. But we are going to, if the weather's nice, we'll put music outside. And then every, all the businesses are doing something. Mini Hains is doing Star Wars trivia out on their patio out back. Central Tavern's doing a specialty drink, C-3PO. Cause there's C-3 and C-3PO is one of the characters.
And I do have the Star Wars original music on 33 at home and I can play it if anybody wants to listen to it. Yeah, so I think it will be.
But all the businesses are being involved. And even the Relay for Life people, they heard about it and they wanna do something with us as well. So she's coming next week, so it's gonna be a really good First Friday.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thanks, Frank.
Mr. Whitehair, come on down.
Thank you, Dan, I just had a couple...
Yes, sir, Mr. Whitehair.
The, I am really sorry, we missed the Elton Alliance Lunch on Monday. We got back that night, crap. My question is, I've been coming here, I want to meet this guy, Tony, does his last name Kirk?
Cody.
Tony. Tony, what was his last name?
Cody Kirk.
He, now he's not here. Does he come these times?
I have seen him here. He's been the one.
One. You know, you think if he runs this job, he can hear every meeting, that's my problem. No comment.
Who can't go anywhere?
No, no, by the way, I want to meet the guy. You need to come to meetings, straighten, learn what's going on.
That's what I'm telling you.
Jaws education.
That's correct.
The mayor Friday night made us all proud. He was the, not only the emcee at the hospital's Chef's Challenge, he's also the auctioneer. And they told him that right before starting, he'd be the auctioneer. That'd be a tougher meeting, but he did a great job. The third thing on your parking, and I think the town attorney's exactly right. It's not a good solution. By the way, if you go to the city and visit for music, don't worry about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything for the good of the town of Elton? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.